Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Atsigo City Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, May thirteenth. This evening Sabrina will be taking minutes. Sabrina, can you have the record show that the attorney is online? The city planners present, the city engineers present, along with all council members. You yourself are here and the city administrator. At this time, I'll ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on one end of this ball with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will be moving on to our first item this evening, which is our open forum. This is the portion where you can come to the podium, state your name and address and limit comments to five minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak at this time? Seeing no one in the audience, we will close the open forum and move on to consider our agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ryan.
Like to take down item three dot nine from the consent agenda.
Okay. Nine, we will move it to item five point two.
Sounds good.
I guess four point one, one under your section, four point one.
Sure.
Okay, four point one. Okay. So you want to have any other changes? All right, a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Motion by Ryan, seconded by Jeff. Sir, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next item is our consent agenda. A motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ryan.
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Motion by Ryan, seconded by Tina. Sir, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item four point one is item, the previous three point nine, Ryan.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is another situation where I think this is more than likely a good candidate and will do an excellent job. However, I don't see a communication specialist as a mission critical at this time. And I think our city should probably be in a position where it's in a hiring freeze. So I'm going to vote no on this, although that no should not be considered a reflection on the candidate.
Uh, my comments to it would be, I think this is, is a critical position. We talked about it at length during budget time about making sure that residents have the information, time sensitive information out to them so that they're able to, to find that in that. Having one key person for that communication going out would be very valuable to, to the residents. So that's my comment. I'm not sure if anyone else has anything.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I would, I would continue to agree with that. We've talked about this at length and communication is key. You know, we have certain positions for certain reasons and this one is, is key for that communication. I think this patient, this person is definitely needed and this is a, a good way to start with this.
Mayor?
Yes, Jeff.
To add comment on that. I've seen in my tenure here that we have a lot of positions that have multiple titles or a lot, a lot of people who have multiple titles and multiple positions in the city. And the, uh, you know, we all know it's, our city's growing to now over twenty-three thousand people. So now it's time to make sure, uh, there are a lot of, uh, make sure there's a lot of communication going on with everything in our, all parts of the city, whether it be parks, streets, sewers, and of course, city staff and council. Uh, so I'm also for this communication specialist to make sure everything's all heard and this is actually, you know, this person's job to make sure everything is broadcasted out as needed.
Is there any more comments? Otherwise a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion. Um, motion to approve the hiring of Heidi Carey for the position of communication specialist at pay grade five, step four.
Second. Motion by Tina, seconded by Brittany. Sir, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. All right, we were, we are on city council reports and updates. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add this time?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Brittany.
I will just, um, remind everyone that tomorrow night is touch truck from six to seven thirty. But that's really all I have.
Park's gonna be happen.
It's gonna be a busy place.
All right, any other discussion? We will move on to staff reports and updates. We will do that after, but we have item five point one. Adam, are you taking this or?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you, council. Uh, this is more of a follow-up to the, uh, continuing the discussion from the April twenty-second meeting regarding the financing mechanisms for the fire and emergency services building project. There was direction from the council to, uh, wait until this meeting until there are all five of you present so that you can each provide your a feedback on how to move forward and again, staff would only be seeking direction on how to take the next steps in the financing of that project. So can answer any questions that are providing any more detail for you, but again, this would be continued discussion from April twenty-second.
Council comments, questions for staff on this?
Real quick, Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Tina, were you updated on the discussions?
Yes, I was. I spoke to Adam myself, so he updated me.
Okay.
Yep.
I can review the two options or what would you, um, if you need or?
I'm sorry, and did you want a decision tonight?
Uh, so either of the two financing mechanisms have numerous steps involved with them. And staff needs direction on which of those options to start drafting documents or scheduling meetings for. So I'm looking for direction or questions that I can bring additional information back to you to make a decision at a future date. So again, Jessica Green with Northland Securities was present on April twenty-second to review the memo included in your packet that evening. Um, council direction was to bring this back for further discussion, uh, once all five of you were here.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Brittany.
I don't think I have any questions, Adam, for you. I think as far as, um, direction for myself or, you know, what I would like to see happen is I just don't know that I'm willing to risk the project not moving forward, so I would be in favor of moving forward with an EDA, a meeting with the EDA and having that conversation. I would be lying if I said that I was, didn't feel uneasy that this potentially there could be a petition involved and again, just having as much time and staff time, council time, taxpayer dollars to again, push this out. I, I'm just not sure that I'm comfortable with that. Had we had this, had we, have we, if we were to do route, uh, you know, route one and then if it, there were petition and then having to be put on a ballot, we're looking at time and I'm gonna guess more money. I could be wrong, but more money with delaying the project.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
My comment on that, uh, council member Dunlap had some good points on, uh, our, is our, from our discussions last time. Uh, but my, just my, uh, point would also agree with Brittany would be if, when could we decide and would this be all for the, I believe the tentative schedule for our budget is December ninth. And that sounded like the right date, our first Monday in December. With that, would this portion be decided? And if there is a, uh, uh, you know, a signature, you know, whatever that needs to be done with the signatures and whatnot. How long could the delay be for this fire station? Right now we are on schedule for January first twenty-seven. If this gets delayed, would this be delayed another year and then we'd also have to pay our neighbors another year of fire services? If this is delayed via, you know, whatever secondary ballot, would you know anything about that?
Can you clarify your question?
Okay, let's say with all our budgetary meetings and everything else and the big deal would be fire emergency services. Okay, we pass budget, whatever on the ninth. There is a, uh, uh, there's, there are, let's say, uh, signatures come in that we have to then put this to a vote. When would be the next vote again on that?
So, uh,
You would be moving this before?
Two parts.
December.
The December ninth budget wouldn't necessarily be impacted by this. So those are two separate decisions. The council is talking about financing mechanisms for completing the fire and emergency service building project. So it doesn't necessarily have to be a levy or a budget assigned with your budget approvals on December ninth. So clarify that question?
I think so for that portion. And then how would the, what would be our vote be ready? Well, let's say we do vote for the first CIP. And would the next, could we have that ballot then on this upcoming ballot that we have coming in November? That's, I guess, my direction or add.
Are you doing a general obligation versus the EDA? Is that your question?
Yes.
So your question is if the city pursued the CIP general obligation bond?
Thanks.
And you received a petition, would there be enough time to put it on the ballot?
Correct.
Depending upon, yes, depending upon when you conduct the hearing and when your petition is received. So from the time you have the public hearing about the CIP document, there's a thirty day petition window uh, in order for the public to provide signatures to the city. Uh, depending upon when that thirty days is met, there may be enough time to submit a question to the county to include on the ballot through twenty twenty-four.
I think, I mean, we've talked at length that we have gone down this path of opening our own fire department and opening up a station and having a station here. And every study has shown that this eventually is where we are going to end up. And so I am for moving this ahead and meeting that deadline of January one of twenty twenty-seven.
And I as well, um, you know, we've been planning for this since our first, I mean, the, the study came out twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen and, you know, I came on board after that, um, fire study and we are almost twenty thousand people in our city and we don't have a fire department. I think that's it's insane. It's, it's, it's ridiculous that we don't have a fire department. Um, this should have been built many, many years ago in my, how I think of it and we don't have anything and I, I know it's a cost. Um, we live here, we're, we pay taxes, but it's a, it's a necessity and it's not gonna get any cheaper if we wait. And I don't wanna risk not being able to bring in a fire department in our city that needs it. Um, we have so many residents here that we need to protect and provide services for, and this is something that we need to pursue forward. And either way you look at it is, is a risk. The EDA, you know, putting it on a ballot, it, it's, it's all of a risk and sometimes with these big ticket items, we need, we need to take risks, but we need to take the right risk. And I believe that the right risk to move this thing forward is the EDA. I, I don't wanna prolong it anymore. We've prolonged it way too long in my mind, and this is something that the city of Atsigo needs. So I wanna continue moving forward.
Madam Mayor, EDA is not unheard of. Again, I just, I think that this is the route that I would like to move forward.
And how can we get, would we get started?
That, there's, like I mentioned, there's, there's numerous steps involved for whatever financing mechanism you're issuing for a city project. And I just need to know, uh, along with Northland Securities on how to provide direction to them on which documents to prepare, whether that's related to one mechanism or the other. I just need that direction so that we can start on that path in preparing those documents.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ryan.
I have a resolution. I don't have enough copies for everyone, so I'll read it and then I'll pass it around. Uh, this resolution is titled placing the bond for the new fire station on the November ballot. It reads as follows, whereas the city of Atsigo is currently planning to build a new fire station at an estimated cost of twenty-one million dollars and does not have the funds necessary to cover this expense. And whereas cities have the option under Minnesota law of taking on debt in the form of a general obligation capital improvement plan, CIP bond, or an economic development authority, EDA, lease revenue bond in order to fund projects of this size. And whereas Minnesota state law provides a mechanism for residents to challenge increases in their property taxes from a CIP bond known as a reverse referendum. And whereas the city of Atsigo recognizes that an EDA lease revenue bond presents more risk, is more expensive, and does not allow the citizens of Atsigo to provide a petition to initiate a reverse referendum. And whereas the city of Atsigo respects the hard-earned money of its citizens and seeks to protect their rights and their voice in all matters. And whereas the CIP bond is likely to initiate a reverse referendum with the citizens of Atsigo, which would either cancel the project for one year or place the issue on the ballot. Now, therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Atsigo, Minnesota. Number one, the city council will not seek to fund the new fire station using an EDA bond mechanism. Number two, the city administrator is hereby authorized and directed to place the issue of bond funding for the new fire station on the November twenty twenty-four ballot with specific language to be determined at a later time in accordance with all applicable state laws. It is my intent to offer this resolution. I would be happy to answer any questions or consider amendments.
Madam Mayor? I can, I'll just take a peek at this real quick. So my only, well, I mean, not my only, but the estimated cost of twenty-one million, I here's just where I struggle. It would just be, again, a little bit nice if, if the verbiage that you used and shall we say your to you education to residents, uh, again, it's, we, this is not, this is not a valid number because we don't know the number yet. So it's hard for me for you, when you say twenty-one million dollars, because again, this might not be the number. So I just, I it, it feels like worst case scenario, you know, like it, it just, it seems as if you were to give what we heard and what we've seen with staff. It's not, it, it might not be twenty-one million.
Is there a word or, um, a phrase that you would prefer to be there instead?
Well, I just like the truth there. I mean, estimated cost of nineteen point five to twenty-one. It's, again, you can put something out there and I'm not gonna have a pissing match with you, but I'm, it's, it's, you can put it out there, but again, it's just not, this isn't.
Our, our special meeting that we had when we went over this had the bond estimated at twenty-one million, so that was the number I used.
I can respect that, but again, I, I just don't know, we don't know that that would be the number. So I have, that's just, I have a hard time with that because again, I think people, obviously nineteen point five to twenty-one million, that's still, that's, it's a very large number. I'm, we're not, no one's denying that. But again, I, I just feel it would be so, it, it would just be reassuring and it would be more valid for me and I could respect it more had you, if you were to give what the actual numbers that were presented. Again, this is not, to me, this is not, um, it, it might not be twenty million dollars.
Again, the, the last meeting we had had that number of twenty-one million for the CIP or EDA bond comparison. So that was the number I used.
Real quick, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One thing I haven't heard at all yet from either people online. Um, I always, one reason why I do not comment online is I always, always ask all of our fif- fourteen thousand plus registered voters to come to city hall. Uh, tell us yea or nay, uh, about any type of city projects instead of, you know, everybody getting whipped up, you know, people putting crap online. And everybody getting a different direction and, you know, everybody's, uh, feelings are hopefully, uh, you know, hurt or whatnot and go from there. But one thing I haven't heard yet is uh, the pros of fire services now. We all, thanks to our budgets and thanks to county coming in and showing us that we have three point seven billion in assets of these five council members, including myself are responsible for, not including the twenty-three thousand lives that are here. So with that being said, with those voters who are, again, we are here twice a month, come on in, tell us what's going on to our open forum and tell us that is appropriate for us to be spending money to our neighbors or spending money part of our property taxes uh, and giving money to Elk River Rogers in Albertville. Uh, as I've seen to end of twenty twenty-four is twelve point six million from nine, nineteen ninety-three. I don't know any information before that, so I can't tell you anything there. And with our fire services director, he's given us, uh, with averages of fourteen percent for the next two years that we have to pay for, to have to be covered for twenty-five and twenty-six with almost a total of close to sixteen million. I haven't heard anybody said, oh yeah, let's keep, keep giving our neighbors, uh, for fire services these numbers. Oh, by the way, when I call nine one one and I live on the east side, or actually get covered by Elk River, I like to be, you know, when I'm in an emergency, I wanna be, I wanna be put on hold to shift to Sherwin County so I can get Elk River Fire Services. I wanna be put on hold to get to Sherwin County for my ambulance services. If I'm in the Rogers covered area or our southeastern portion, I wanna be put on hold and wait for Hennepin County to have Rogers come in, whether it be emergency services or whatnot or ambulance. Now, I'm in the west side, so I have Albertville and it's a little bit quicker for me, but you know, Albertville, it still says Albertville. Yes, I've paid for that part of my taxes that we've all have. But then I also have to wait for St. Michael for ambulance. I've had to call nine one to have those services come. And, you know, we can spit match times on, you know, everybody has an opinion, which is fantastic, but our job as councils to make sure everything is as fast as possible for the value of these taxes that we pay for. And we've, we can, you know, we can beat our, we can beat our fists against the desk on how expensive our taxes are, which, which are, which is expensive, but we have to pay for it. It is what it is. So it's pretty much when somebody, when we have people come in here saying, yep, I'm, I'm perfectly happy with the council, but they're doing in the direction of going when it pan for Elk River Rogers in Albertville. Then when I have to wait for emergency, uh, for ambulances from Elk River, from Monticello, from St. Michael, that's perfect. Putting this fire station in the center of city is just wrong. Putting an ambulance in the center of the city is wrong. I have not heard that. We have had, uh, residents coming here telling uh, we're for this. We want this. Yes, we know it's expensive. Yes, we know about taxes. And yes, it's always nice to make sure there's somebody that are telling, okay, this is expensive here. Make sure you're paying attention to what you're spending here, which we have, but until then, I am also for, but with the funding, it's, it's kind of like, let's get it, you know, I'm the best, a resident said during our public service meeting or public safety meeting was enough for the studies, get it done. And I, I, that, a residence, that resident struck court with me, so that's the way I'm for it, getting it done. If it means EDA, EDA it is.
Mayor, the city attorney.
Dave, you have your hand up?
I do, Mayor. It's not totally, from a procedural standpoint here, it's not totally clear to me what's happening. So I don't know if member Dunlap has made a motion for the council to adopt this resolution that he has read. Uh, if so, I don't know if I heard a second to that motion. Uh, also, I wanted to note, I, I don't have a copy of it in front of me and I was not able to write it all down, uh, verbatim, obviously, but I think part of it involved a motion for the council to direct staff to place this on the ballot. And I have not had a chance to, to research the legal question, but I, as I recall, the statute requires a petition for it to be placed on the ballot. I don't think the council can simply direct staff to place it on the ballot. So there may be some legal issues with the proposed resolution that I've not had a chance to review yet, but I also just was unclear about what's currently on the table for discussion and whether it was a motion that would require a second, so.
Adam?
Uh, Mayor, I would also comment that if the council would intend to place the question on the ballot, that we should involve bond council to draft and review the resolution on the city's behalf, uh, before having council vote on such a resolution, so. I would want bond council to review and, and or draft any of the documents.
I appreciate Ryan's typing up of his resolution. I would ask Ryan a question if he's met with staff on this. Obviously, our attorney is not aware of this. Adam, have, Brian, did you meet with Adam? Did you meet with our emergency services director or this is just your proposal this evening and not looking at it as a overall what the impact is of this act? I, I'm, I'm just very confused as none of us have a copy of this before tonight when you read it and then passed it along.
Yep, so Dave, I just sent you a copy of it.
During the meeting?
Right.
Yeah? Oh, okay.
Um, and the reason that I don't have copies is I, I, when I read this as the item on the agenda, I did not think that that was gonna be the discussion. That's on me. But I did have a copy of it in my briefcase, in case this was an issue that we discussed in the prior meeting. I, I just didn't make enough copies. Um, and I, I didn't bring it to the attorney because there hasn't been time. But, um, to answer the attorney's question, I have not offered it yet. I am sort of giving a courtesy of a discussion. Um, if there's any amendments, if there's any language that needs to be changed, that's kind of what I'm, I'm doing at this point, but um, I do intend to offer them the resolution.
So the question was asked and you haven't answered it. Did you ever talk to Adam about it?
No, I did not.
Or Daryl?
No, I did not. The question before us is CIP versus EDA. Uh, we can go round and round on whether a fire department is necessary. And I recognize that I am not in the majority on that position, but when it comes to the CIP versus the EDA, what we have discussed is that there is only one reason to do the EDA bond, and that is to prevent a reverse referendum. And to me, we are all elected officials. We were put here by the residents to represent their interests and to protect their rights. I cannot see, it is not clear to me whose rights we are protecting and whose interests we are serving by preventing the people from petitioning their government. It is the most disgusting thing I have ever seen. And on top of it, we're gonna be charging them more to do it. I can't understand why any council member would support the EDA bond, but this is your get out of jail free card. By passing this resolution, we put it on the ballot directly, which it is my understanding we have the ability to do that because I've asked our bond, our bond council if we can. That makes it so that a petition wouldn't be necessary. We can still follow a timeline. And if I'm correct and the majority of citizens do not support this, then it won't pass. But you'll have plenty of time to convince the residents that it's the right thing to do.
But, okay, to that point, I've asked that question to Adam and to Jessica. There's cert, we, it's not like the city can be going out and campaigning for the fire station, which that would be use of the communication specialist, which you just actually didn't support hiring that person. So you've made it very clear that you would actively go out and tell people that this is a terrible idea. We've seen some comments about that. And so I, I guess I'm struggling to see where you wanna be so transparent with what's going on, but yet you don't wanna get the message out to our residents, what is going on and here's the information, because the, the city can't do that.
The council members certainly can.
Real quick, you mentioned Real quick, you mentioned it was, it is sickening, we are, well. I won't rephrase because I'm, I'll just, it was a lot of words that you said there that was really good. But one thing that we were all voted in as part of our democratic process. Now there's five of us. In every single meeting we have, we do a thing called a pledge of allegiance. A lot of us said it from kindergarten to sixth grade and a lot of us say it in government, uh, government, any type of forums when we begin. One big key portion of that pledge of allegiance into the republic for which it stands. The five of us are part of the republic, the five of us. Fourteen thousand voters gave five of us the job to put this, whether we, whether we decide to do it, either C P I, C I P or E D A. The five of us into the republic for which it stands, that that's what we're doing. Anybody can turn it, spin it any day they want. This is government. Government is boring, but on the other hand, as you can see, there's nobody here. But when there's somebody here going. You know what? This fire station sucks. Let's keep putting the money into our neighbors, you know, especially after if this gets delayed another year. And then we got to pay our neighbors again in twenty twenty seven. You know, God bless you. That's two million dollars. You know, there's a waste of money. You know, God bless those are our three neighbors, but whatever, after twenty seven, forget it. But I don't know, I I'm still stuck on the, you know, it's our job to do this and this is the hard part. So it is what it is. But either way, do we need? Do we need to give you direction?
If I could, if I could have the resolution back.
And we'll need a copy for the public record.
Madam Mayor. I offer the resolution titled placing the bond for the new fire station on the November ballot as written and printed. As read and printed, I guess.
Mayor, I just want to make a a quick comment here. I've not had the opportunity to research this. Member Dunlop says, I I'm aware of the the statute saying that this can be put to an election. After receipt of a petition signed by a certain number of individuals who voted in the last election. I'm not aware of the council's authority to put this on the ballot for election without that petition. Member Dunlop says he's talked to bond counsel who's said that, but bond counsel is not here. I'm not aware of that. Uh, I'd like to talk or have city staff talk with bond counsel before. Uh, the city concluded that, so. I'm not clear that uh that last. Portion of the resolution requiring staff to place this on the ballot without a proper petition would be legal. Just so the council is aware of that. I've just not had time to consult with bond councils. Member Dunlop has, I'd like the opportunity to do the, do the same. But just want the council to be aware of that before voting on the motion.
I'm not going to withdraw it, so.
So Ryan has made a motion. We're not sure, uh, based on our attorney's comments, that what is included is accurate at this time. Or what is requested. Is there a second? Ask again, is there a second? More time, is there a second? Motion fails due to a second.
Mayor.
Yes.
City staff can certainly reach out to bond counsel and prepare. Such a resolution for the council to consider if you want to provide that direction. But as city attorney Kendall mentioned, uh, we've not had opportunity to review the proposed resolution. Um, and would ask for input through bond counsel before presenting it to the council.
It sounds like everything uh Ryan has down would be for C I P, but. I guess the question to council would be, is it E D A or C I P correct right now?
That are.
That was the discussion.
The discussion on the twenty second.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would like, I believe Adam, you're asking for a motion, so if you are asking for a motion, I'm. I would make a motion for staff to move forward to P D A bonds for the fire department.
And to be clear, you're not approving issuance or sale of anything this night.
Correct.
Regardless of what financing mechanism, you're just providing direction through a motion to staff to prepare documents.
That is correct.
Second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Ryan.
I I grew up watching C-SPAN. And UK Parliament, the House of Commons. In my spare time, I watch city council meetings from across the state and even in other states. I'd like to think I have a pretty good understanding of the. Language of politics. I have never seen a council do something. As disgusting as what we're about to do. It's it's really shameful.
And to Adam's point, we are not.
Not voting on it.
We're not voting on this, we're moving ahead to.
There is a motion in a second.
To to move.
To move forward with the E D A bond. There is only one reason to do the E D A.
Paperwork on it. We're not moving forward a bond.
We haven't voted.
It should be off the table, is my point.
But it's not. So I I made the motion, Jeff has seconded.
And my other comments will be, as I said last time, both of the buildings that were built here in the city of Atsigo were done with the E D A. Many other cities use the E D A as a form to finance these these type of buildings.
Does not have to be a negative.
Right.
But it is.
Of you.
One negative we could have, these five council members, including myself, are now fifty two million dollars behind in in uh infrastructure. Look at any way you want, fifty two million. And then there's going to be more. With what we've seen with parks.
These are all arguments we should be making to the citizens directly.
Right.
And instead, we're going to take away their voice.
Let them voice it, but not on a website where everybody does it. Not here. That's what they're here for. Anyway.
So we have a first and we have a second. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Hell no.
Motion passes four to one. To proceed with an E D A hearing, correct, Adam, and to drop the paperwork.
Ask council member Morris to clarify her motion and to prepare documents for that.
Correct.
That's what I heard, yep.
Yep. All right. We are still on our staff reports and updates. Sabrina.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just two more dates. Uh, we will hopefully be having more. Uh, recruitment uh recommendations at the next council meeting for our um current vacant positions. So existing positions that we have, so those will hopefully be at the next council meeting. And then that's it.
Thank you for taking minutes this evening.
We'll see about that later.
Adam.
Mayor, Council, one, uh, note, the next meeting is actually on a Tuesday, May twenty eighth, uh, due to Memorial Day being on Monday.
Okay. Dave.
I have no report. Thanks, Mayor.
Dan.
Mayor, nothing to report.
Ron.
No updates, Mayor.
Daryl.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, just like to report on May fourth, we had the Safe at Home program here. Had a couple of council members' children that were uh involved in it. Uh, we had a good turnout. We had representatives from parks. Um, and Sheriff's Department, myself, uh, presented to fifteen children. Uh, that was a very well received program. The other update I'd like to give you is remind you that tomorrow night is Touch a Truck here at the park, so. Please stop out and see us while we out there with the other departments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Daryl. Any comments from Wright County? Okay.
Thanks for having me. Obviously, I'm not Jason, um, but temporarily I'm going to be your Jason. I found this out a couple hours ago, so I'm not very prepared to give you much.
Okay.
Uh, my name's Jordan Barto. Um, I worked for the sheriff's office for twelve years and I've been on as a patrol sergeant for two. Um, so like I said, I don't really have much for you. If you guys have questions for me. Um, or something I need to follow up with, I'll stick around after. I'll give you some cards and so forth.
Great. Jordan, will you be planning to attend our Public Safety Commission meetings?
As of right now, no.
Okay.
Um, that's, we're still. They're still figuring that out.
Will there be someone from the Sheriff's Department?
I'm not certain on that. Like I said, I just found out about this a couple hours ago.
Okay.
And it's my first day back after five days, so I'm a little bit behind on it.
Sure. If you could just let or have someone be in contact with Daryl, just because at those meetings, usually we get a little update from the. You you don't have to do the presentation as though we usually get, but uh, just if there's any information.
To use the to fill.
Yes, if there's any information to pass on to Daryl, that he could get it to the commission, that would be great. Um, and then a two way street that if that group comes up with anything, they would give it to Daryl and pass it on through you guys. Just want to make sure we're, yes. Our line of communication is is understood. All right, does anyone have anything?
Just real quick, I'm sorry, was your rank sergeant?
Sorry.
Are you, is your rank sergeant?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
All right. Well, thank you for attending this evening.
Thanks for having me.
Yeah, it sounds like I'm, we're happier here and.
For the catching up.
Yeah.
I get a little snippet from Jason once in a while.
Okay.
Feel pretty behind them.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant. Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Real quick, I think we needed to call for a special meeting on the twenty eighth.
Uh, yes, we were looking for to schedule a budget meeting uh to discuss special revenue and debt service uh funds.
Five thirty or at thirty?
Choose five thirty or post.
Five thirty work for every, yes, does everything, what do you work?
Five thirty, yep.
Yep. Okay, I'll I'll make, are you doing that, Ryan?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to call for a budget meeting on May twenty eighth at five thirty here before the regular council meeting.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Ryan. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? A motion to adjourn would be in order then.
Second.
Motion by Tina, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you all for attending this evening and go enjoy the sun for a little bit.